Mr. Merrill.
So moved.
Muriel Ross, Second Peters. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested by not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that...
This is just for agenda items?
Yeah, you're going to have to wait, sorry. We're going to have to wait, slam. Is there anybody that wants to speak to anything on the agenda? Okay, on the consent agenda, the consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion where we're at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Do we have a motion or...
Move to approve as submitted.
Second. Muriel Ross, Second Terhar, to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, we have item 12124. This is an application for a community event, the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 1st, 2012 letter, an application for community event use of public ways from Rebecca Schneider, Helen Martin, and Cindy Zubko for the annual Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest event, to acknowledge receipt of the August 16th, 2012 memo from Police Chief Rinnick, the August 10th, 2012 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and the August 15th, 2012 memo from Fire Chief Taft. To approve or not approve of the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest event to be held downtown Celine on September 28th and 29th, 2012, including authorization for the beer wine tent utilizing North and South Inver Street and parking lots number one and number four, and the farmer's market being relocated to parking lot number two, subject to the following conditions: One, does a traffic engineer issue that require temporary traffic control orders for the street closings? Two, that a permit be obtained from MDOT for the closing of the left turn lanes on Michigan Avenue? Three, that a certificate of liability insurance be provided by Celine Main Street with the City of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for this event? Four, that a certificate of liquor liability insurance be provided by the applicant for the beer wine tent with the City of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party? That all temporary signs are subject to approval by the Building Department before being placed? And six, that all fees over and above the normal operating cost for the portages and the hand washing stations and/or police and DPW services be waived. So we have a motion.
I move that we acknowledge receipt, approve, and that the fees be waived.
Support.
Move, Mr. Roth. To approve and waive the fees, and we have a support for Mr. Rhodes. Discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
Again, this is one of those things that helps make Celine the community that it is and brings people to us and is part of our heritage, part of our culture, and I appreciate very much the efforts of the folks who headed this up. And I am also glad to see that Mr. Fordice added the comment about recycling containers that would be provided for this event along with the requested waste receptacles. And I would like to request that the application for the community event, item eight, under Roman numeral eight, that recycled containers be added to the list of special materials. It already says water service, dumpsters, waste receptacles, et cetera, but I'd like to have recycled containers on there so that it doesn't get forgotten in the future.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Terhar.
I had the same comment about recycled containers, exactly, and also just would like to make a comment that having been involved in the Oktoberfest for a number of years now, it's been, it's been really wonderful to see this event develop and get more and more sophisticated and have more and more features and attractions over the years. And I think that moving it into the, under the Main Street umbrella this year will just notch it up another step, and I think that's great.
Any further discussion? I have a question, what's hammerschlagen?
You have to pay $10 to find out.
Is it a card game or is it a bowling?
No, it's actually a game of skill, and it is an old traditional German game. And what happens is, it's going to be a tournament, and it will be a fundraising event for Celine Main Street, but there's a huge stump and involves a hammer and a nail, and you compete against one other person, and the kicker is that this hammer is like this, so you have to hit the nail with the V end, and it's very difficult. And you have to hit it with, so the person that hits it the least amount of times and gets it in first goes on in the tournament and becomes the winner.
Okay.
So we're going to do that.
So that's why it says hammer, hammerschlagen play.
Do you remember the definition for hammer schlagen? There you go. Hammer and pound.
Thank you. So it's a fundraiser for Michigan Main, Celine Main Street program? Okay, great. Any other questions about the Oktoberfest event? Now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the proposal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under item 12129, the annual liability and property insurance pool renewal, this would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 15th, 2012 memo from City Manager Campbell to approve or not approve the annual renewal premium for the Michigan Municipal League Liability Property Pool at Meadowbrook for the period of September 1, 2012 through August 31, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $130,464.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Rhodes, Second Terhar, to approve. Discussion? Mr. PML.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the, the annual renewal, as it states, excuse me, with Meadowbrook, through the Michigan Municipal League, our liability and property pool. Been very happy with them, and as you can see, it's, it's basically flat, but is a slight 0.3% reduction from last year, so it's just under $400 savings, which, of course, we will take every nickel we can get. But they will also be bringing, as you see in there, that they'll be bringing in September a dividend check to present to us in excess of $21,000, so that certainly is beneficial.
Any questions for...
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peters.
Any big changes from last year between this policy and last year's?
Um, not really. No, it's fairly, fairly standard.
And Mr. Gierba.
I was just curious, you know, I mentioned that we encourage you to compare the pool with our competition, referring to just the pool itself as insurance, that you're not talking about our correct...
No, no, right, correct, our insurance pool. We have, it's member municipalities, it's solely municipalities that are members, and we are one member of the membership pool.
Mr. Terhar.
Thanks. I, I just wondered how the dividend, expected dividend compares with last year's?
It's close. We were around 21, 22 last year.
Thank you. Any further questions? So we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt and approve. No further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is 12128. This is a request to purchase wholesale water from Reinders Incorporated. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 15th, 2012 letter from Dennis Reinders, and the August 15th, 2012 memo from City Manager Campbell to remove or not remove a moratorium on selling of wholesale water for projects within the limits of the city. Do we have a motion?
Move to remove.
And I second.
Move Rhodes, Second Roth. To remove?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may recall several months ago, City Council had put a moratorium on the sale of wholesale water inside and outside the city limits, as our practice has been, to sell wholesale water to contractors for various projects. And we talked about, as reference to the oil and gas exploration wells recently in the surrounding our neighbor, our neighboring townships. And Council considered possibly amending the ordinance to not allow, and, and Council since said, no, we'll continue to allow, but the moratorium was still in place with the new Linden Square, which is the Reinders Assistant Living Facility. They're needing water, as they're putting in a geothermal heating and cooling system, and they need that water primarily to, to, to drill the wells, the thermal, geothermal wells, but also for just site maintenance of dust control, as well as for compaction of their, of materials when they're, when they're backfilling and those types of things. So they're asking that, that they'd be able to do that, and my estimation is that the only way we can do that is if either they make, either the City Council consider an exception or to remove the moratorium at least in the city. Because that was one of the other things you may recall that Council considered was to just allow selling of wholesale water within this, for projects within the city. So happy to try and answer any questions the best I can.
Mr. Peters.
I'm certainly in support of, of selling the water, but last April, when I voted on this issue, I voted on a moratorium, not a ban. We should have some kind of a timeframe associated with this moratorium, you know, a six-month moratorium, a 12-month moratorium. I don't know if we do. I'm in favor of lifting it altogether, and as far as I'm concerned, if you are a licensed contractor and you're engaged in legal work, then Celine should have the ability to sell you water. If we start to pick and choose, I think we, it's going down a slippery slope. So I don't know if there's, if there's something more we can do with this moratorium. Should we assess a time limit to it?
Well, the motion's just for...
Yeah, I know.
Within the city.
I took it a little bit past that.
So you can put that on a future agenda.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to remove the moratorium on selling water for projects within the city limits? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is 12125, the disposition of patrol car involved in the accident. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 15th, 2012 memo from Police Chief Rinnick to approve or not approve the purchase of the 2013 Tahoe from Crispin Chevrolet in the amount of $25,902.90 with an actual cost of $17,210.90 after the authorized insurance payment of $15,800 to replace patrol vehicle 123 that was involved in an accident on July 31st, 2012. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Rhodes, Second Peters. Police Chief, you want to come up? Please.
Thank you. Fortunately, I gave you a copy of the picture of the patrol car, and you saw that it was fairly badly damaged. Unfortunately for us, Officer Snook was actually outside of the vehicle at the time, so he was not hurt. Cars can be replaced, as, as you, as you see, but hopefully by getting another Tahoe instead of a patrol vehicle, I think the damage would have been much less, so I think getting a Tahoe is a better thing to do. Also, because of the pricing, we were able to actually get the car for almost $800 cheaper than a 2012, and we're going to be getting a 2013 model, since they stopped making the 2012s. You know, unless we have some unforeseen emergency where we have the same type of situation where an officer is involved in a crash, I don't anticipate putting a vehicle in next year's budget, and so I would ask that you would approve the amount of $17,210 to replace the vehicle that was smashed.
Question? Does this include the equipment that's in it, the electronics and all the other stuff?
All the electronics that were in the trunk, we believe are working. We're not sure until we hook them up, but the insurance company did say as long as we do that within a year, and if they're not working, they will reimburse us for the cost of those as well. But at this point in time, we believe that those are working.
And they cover the cost of installation, removal, and installing in a new vehicle?
The, the, the total cost of the project is going to be $33,010. That's with the build, the graphics, and the difference for, for the Tahoe. And then once you subtract the, the amount that the insurance company gave us, that's the $17,210, and that's what I'm asking for, is just the difference. That will completely build us a brand-new patrol vehicle.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gierba.
Just curious, the insurance claim, who is covering it? Is there any chance for us to go back against the other vehicle that hit the back end, or is it all no fault? Because the car was parked, it wasn't the...
No fault, correct.
So that's it? We can't go back against for anything additional?
Correct.
Or our own insurance policy?
Well, that's who's covering it. Our own insurance policy's covering it.
I didn't know if we could do a conditional because of being comprehensive, so, all right.
I'd also like to point out real quickly, if I could, we were able to actually to buy the salvaged patrol car, and the DPW was able to strip that vehicle, and we probably have about $7,000 to $8,000 worth of parts that we'll be able to use for our remaining two Crown Vics. And we were able to purchase that for about $18.50, I believe is what the price was. So we, we did actually fairly well.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you mention a color?
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't. Thank you. We're going to actually do a black one this time, rather than a white one. And the reason we're going to do that is, I met with all of the officers over the course of the last several weeks, and apparently, we used to have black patrol cars, and they're very excited about the idea of having a black patrol car once again, and so my plan is to put a black one on. So we're going to have black and whites, but not together.
Mr. Rhodes.
Could you explain why they liked the black one as opposed to a white?
I'm not exactly sure. I guess I'm, I'm, you know, I'm more leaning towards silver, because I had silver police cars all my life, but they, they kind of grew up with black police cars, and that's what they really like, and when it was switched to white, several of them felt that they would prefer the black vehicles. And I just think this is, this is probably a small thing that, that I can do and the Council could do to, you know, help just a little bit.
I've heard a lot of good things about the, the new Tahoe that you have.
Yeah, so have I.
It's great that we're continuing on with that, but it'd be nice to do it at a much slower rate.
Absolutely. I agree.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the purchase. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing and the negotiation settlement of collective bargaining agreement. The city will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second? Second Terhar, move. Gierba, Second Terhar. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Gierba?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Terhar?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Merrill is absent. Mayor Driscoll.
Yes. So we're during the closed session, it's seven fifty-four nine. Everybody's back? We'll reconvene into regular session at eight forty-two. And we have next up on the agenda, item 12126, which is the Teamsters Local Number 214 Collective Bargaining Agreement. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 16th, 2012 memo from City Manager Campbell to ratify and approve or not approve the contract between the City of Celine and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Hofer's, Warehousemen, and Helpers of America in its local number 214 for a one-year period beginning July 1, 2012 through July, through June 30th, 2013, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute that contract after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to ratify and approve and to authorize.
Second. Muriel Ross, Second Terhar, to ratify and approve and authorize? Discussion? Mr. Gierba.
I just want to thank Mr. Campbell and the members of the Teamsters for their great work on this, and I think this is a good situation for us facing such hard times, that this is a very well-negotiated contract, and I appreciate everybody's work towards it.
I think all of Council expressed the appreciation that Teamsters have been good to work with over the last few years, when we've been struggling, and appreciate continuing to work with them, and everybody's committed to this community, so thanks a lot, and thanks for the people that are in the audience, and thank you. And attorney, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate that, and I was going to pass that along to the team, and, and I do appreciate the team's efforts and from both sides. It was good. Obviously, we didn't, we didn't agree on everything, and, and a little bit of head bumping maybe a little bit, but at the end of the day, I think we certainly got a solid collective bargaining agreement, and it's a benefit to, to our residents, and that's obviously, that's why we're here, is to serve our residents, so.
Any further discussion on the motion? This is a motion to approve, ratify, and approve and authorize? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's not really loud all of a sudden. Under discussion, we have commission committee reports from council members. Are there any commissioner committee reports? Mr. Rhodes.
The Environmental Commission met last week, and we had two, two visitors. One was Pat Greavy from Waste Management to talk about the recycling process within the City of Celine and what happens to those materials once they leave our, our community. And that was, that was quite interesting, and one of the things that I thought was really a very positive statement about the City of Celine is that our recycling rate here in the community is about twice that of most other communities that Waste Management deals with. And there'll be more information coming out, probably will be in an article submitted for publication in the next FYI about that particular thing. We also, while Pat was here, continued to talk about the Environmental Commission display at the Harvest of the Arts coming up, to continue to refine how we're going to set that up, and that's, that'll be something, again, that's different. You might recall, last year, we had actual sod out on the asphalt pavement, and that got a lot of attention, and so I think the display this year will be even, get even more attention. And then the other person that we had was from Channel 18, the Community Access Television Network at the high school, and we talked about putting together one or two-minute public service announcement videos, and we committed to doing one per month, and then they will, they will show those periodically on the, on Channel 18. And I think that was the significant items.
What, what is the recycling? Do you remember?
The amount?
10%?
No, I do not remember that precisely, which is why I was trying to go around that question. Thank you.
I think it should be like 29%. We've always been high since we started the program. It's been, it's, they've always come in, which is great that we're still maintaining that.
He said we're about 50% higher, and I, I think the number that he said was average 10 pounds per week per residence.
Okay.
9.4 pounds.
Okay. Thanks. Reports? Do we have any other commissioner committee reports? Do we have any reports or any other announcements? We have the One Room Schoolhouse event on Sunday. Some folks are going to play the games, not the German game, but what is, there's two croquet and...
Croquet and beanbag toss, I think.
So there's, the One Room Schoolhouse in Celine has a annual...
Celebration. Ice cream social.
Ice cream social, thank you. We don't have the information with us, but I know we talked about it a week ago. When to four? Oh, Diane's on the thing.
Twenty-sixth.
Great. Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Campbell?
We also have our last movie in the park this Friday. What time, Carl?
It's going to start at 6:30 with our sponsor, Jim America. They're going to have demonstration and going to go out and stop everything.
And it'll be a...
Movie will start at dusk.
And it'll be a mill pond.
A movie?
Uh, real.
Mr. Terhar, you had it?
Yes, thank you. There, there are two upcoming Washtenaw Area Transportation Study meetings in Celine. On September 11th, the AATA South Central Transit District Meeting will be held to discuss, to continue the discussion of the planning for countywide transit. That's at the Senior Center at 7:00 PM. And then on the 13th, in this room, the Watts will come and talk about the long-range transit plan for Washtenaw County. This is the 2040 Long Range Plan, and elected officials and public are invited to come discuss and provide direction.
So one's regarding transit, one's regarding the whole transportation system, correct?
Yes. The September 11th meeting is the AATA District Discussion, and the September 13th is the countywide Long Range Plan.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other reports or announcements? Also, under discussion, we have the RFP for the City Attorney Search. Mr. Campbell, you were going to talk about that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Want, as you all know, we have a committee made up of city department heads and one council representative, which is Mayor Pro Tem Gierba, to do a similar process that I'm proposing, that we did with the Police Chief Search, that also is the proposed request for proposal language, the RFP language before you, that we would send it out, solicit proposals. We would vet those and evaluate those and bring it to the top three to five finalists, if you will, or the top three to five firms that we believed to bring forward to the City Council, where then they would come and present, make presentations to the City Council, and you would make a consideration of, of choosing one of those firms. So we wanted to make sure that the process, as you can see from my memo, there's a proposed timeline, that the current, current city attorney contract expires December 31st. Talking with the mayor, she would, she would prefer to see the appointment made at the second meeting in November. It gives basically a 30-day transition period, which I think is a positive thing. So wanted to make sure that was consensus of the council. If there are any concerns or questions, then we could certainly address those tonight, because we want to, as you can see, for instance, fairly, while we do have a little bit of cushion, that November will be here before we know it, kind of like the six months snuck up on us for the Police Chief Search. Then the other was, the other question to, to discuss would be, if there's any language, if the council agreed with the language, or if there's any concerns or any changes that we wanted to see before we push this forward.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council? Two, two things. The start date would be the 2013 on the memo cover page. And I did have a comment regarding...
Oh, yes.
General Legal Services, item number seven, which was attend city council meetings and other meetings as requested by City Manager and/or City Council. I think that needs to be added, that City Council would also be involved with request of the City Attorney attending, not just the City Manager. But other than that, I think that's very well-covered. It's, um, great to have a team working on this RFP. It's a big step for us. We've been very fortunate to have Alan serve the community for a very long time, and it's going to be a tough transition, so I don't have any other comments or questions. Does anybody else have anything else that they observed in the memo? No?
No, we looked at a number of proposals and such that have been done by other communities and tried to get a good idea of what would be appropriate for asking questions, so the whole team, everything, looked at and reviewed it, so we've had some good examples as to what was being proposed.
Okay, great. So with those two changes, I think we are ready to go, and this isn't a vote, it's really discussions to keep council apprised as the process moves forward. Our next item on the agenda under discussion is the MML Conference attendance. That is in early October, and it is the annual conference where it's opportunity to learn about best practices around the state, and there's some really good speakers that MML puts together, and I believe there's a few people that have signed up, but I'm not sure everybody has signed up and was aware of it, so I just wanted to make sure that it is opportunity to learn. I know several of you have attended elected officials' classes 101 and have moved through a lot of the education programs, but there's, it's not, there will be some discussion of legislative issues, but this conference is more focused on what are communities doing that are creative and what, what's going on nationally, globally, and I, hopefully all of you did get a copy of the conference schedule. As you can see by the handout, I think there is a deadline for early registration, and I believe it's like early September, so if you are interested, please get back to Justine as soon as possible. I don't see the early deadline. I think she said it was September 11.
September 7.
September 7, here it is. Okay? So that's, and the final thing under discussion is the Big Red Barrel Project. I know the Police Chief had some things that he'd like to present, to talk about.
I would like to show the council the success that we've had with our Big Red Barrel. Officer Bolter is our evidence officer, and last week emptied out the Big Red Barrel.
Maybe we could talk about what the Big Red Barrel is?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Big Red Barrel is a collection program to collect unwanted drugs so they don't find their, their way back into the environment. In this way, what, what happens to these is they're taken to an incinerator and burned as opposed to being caught in our, in our water, in our, in our landfills and that type of stuff. The bag that you see Officer Bolter with came from the first three weeks, and after they were all emptied out of their containers, we have over seven pounds of pills there, and of course, there is really quite a variety there, as you can see by all the different colors. And then just before coming into the chambers tonight, he unloaded it one more time, and-
Holy cow.
He probably has at least another 10 pounds worth in that black bag. So this is a real success. I think between the two now, we're, we're going to have probably close to 15, 18 pounds worth of pills-
Has it been a month yet?
In just one month.
Yeah.
In just one month.
Wow, that's incredible.
So really quite a success, and everybody who was involved with bringing this program here needs to be congratulated.
Thanks. So we talked a little bit at the opening about the benefits of this program and the uniqueness of it. I don't know if you want to talk about that, or?
Well, I know it's, it's something that was unique to actually Livingston County, and then we kind of adopted the idea here, and having come from Genesee County, I've already recommended this program to several of my colleagues up there. I, I think this is a great project, keeping, I mean, if one community has that much, I can't imagine what some of the larger cities would, would bring in. It would be amazing.
So just to let people know that are watching the council meeting on TV, the Red Barrel is in City Hall lobby, and it is locked, and so nobody will know if you bring your prescription medication and keep it away from your children's hands, and, and keep it out of our water supply, so it's a really great program that, really appreciate everybody participating in.
Right, and they don't have to worry about leaving their name.
Right.
They drop the pills in anonymously.
Can't get your, and, and you can't get in, into it either, and it's locked down, and it's right in front of the dispatch, so it's very well-secured.
And it's on camera, too.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out.
Madam Mayor, if I might, chief, we talked about also, I mean, certainly you can put in, just toss in the pill bottles, but also if you want to put it in a Ziploc bag, I mean, that just saves space, because obviously, if I understand Officer Bolter, we had a lot of the pill bottles, I mean, a lot.
But we recycled them.
But we did recycle them, absolutely.
We did recycle the pill bottles, but we had an entire container of nothing but pill bottles. So those would have ended up in the landfill as well.
Right, so, so if you can, like you said, if, well, certainly you can just throw the bottle in as well, we certainly encourage that, but if you did want to put it in a Ziploc bag and then recycle the bottle yourself, that's great, too, and that just saves on space, but either way, we'll, we'll take it.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming in. Do we have any other discussion items? If not, we'll move on to public comment under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment here will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dr. Doug Smith. I'm a resident of Pittsfield Township, and I gave you a letter which is an appeal for the partial denial of a, of a FOIA request that I made. I had asked for the registration information, or at least the ownership of the car that Mr. Toussaint was driving when he was picked up for OWI, and it was denied based on the idea that, that it came, that the information came from Lean, which is prohibited by law to be released. However, if you look at the, at the video of the traffic stop, you'll see that, you know, that Mr. Toussaint provides paperwork to the officer, which presumably is driver's license, registration, and, and ensure, proof of insurance. So if you, if that registration information had been different than Lean information, you would have expected that the officer would have noted that or done something in response to that. Therefore, you know, we have to assume that the registration slip that he gave him matched what they gave him in Lean. So if you have information that one is from a prohibited source and one is from a public source, that you can give me the information that was on the registration slip.
Okay.
The, just a couple of other points that I made in the letter, there was also an air pistol that was picked up, and it was confiscated and logged into evidence. This was a, this was a pistol that was a look-alike, you know, that it looks like a Smith &amp; Wesson 40-caliber semi-automatic pistol. There are federal laws that require that such look-alike guns have an orange plug in the barrel or other approved markings to make them legal, so that if they don't have those, they're not legal. Now, in the, in the police report, they didn't note whether or not those markings were present, so you can't tell from the police report whether this was a legal air pistol or an illegal air pistol. And it seems to me that the police report ought to have enough information to tell whether or not this was a legal gun or not a legal gun. Also, state law says that any gun that's disguised to look like a real gun is a handgun. The other thing was that the, the video that I got had no audio, and I'm told that two of the four cars have no audio in their audio, or that, sorry, it's malfunctioning. And, you know, that's really an issue when it comes to going to court, because you may lose out on a confession, but you also may, you know, there, I've seen other cases where there was exculpatory evidence in the audio, or would have been if the audio had not malfunctioned. So, you know, I don't think it's fair either to the citizen or the suspects to, to have, you know, most of your audio not, not functioning.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn Law, 521 Canterbury Drive. Just to pick up on the Red Barrel, I said this before, but I think it's worth repeating just seeing it presented this evening. What a great example of a citizen-driven project and yielding results as it has so far, and so I just wanted to make mention of that. I think that is a great testament of the community stepping forward and taking up something that really, as you can see, has become a benefit for the community. So again, I want to thank those who brought it forward and those on council who supported it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other business to come before the Sleen City Council? If not, we have a meeting on September 10 at 7:30 PM and one on September 17 at 7:30 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 9:02?
So moved.
Move Tahr, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gearbox. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.